A council meeting to order, please. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, we have a roll call, please.
Cam Collier.
Here.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Wiley Sir.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our April 18th meeting. Did you have a chance to approve those or to read those minutes? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion from Matt and a second from Craig to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is the event form for abate and the motorcycle rally. You were here once before, talked this briefly. We told you you needed to get the form filled out and they have done so. They're all good to go, signed off by Greg, the Fire Department and Street Department. The ride is June 11th, which is the second weekend in June. It won't be the same weekend, I don't think. When's graduation this year?
The first weekend, first Sunday.
And it won't interfere with the flea market? So it's a good weekend for that in that respect. It's the same weekend as the unveiling of the sculpture tours. I think Melissa did talk with you a little bit about a Plan B, just in case the Schaefer Building is being demoed, then Madison Street would be off limits, which I think in the past, that's where you had the little kids' functions or whatever.
We were talking about doing the bike show on that street this year, but we can...
If need be.
Figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But are there any questions from council before we vote to approve their event form?
Just commentary. It seems to be very well attended. They do a wonderful job at bringing some people to town and people seem to enjoy it. Love having you.
They have written on here, we have volunteers to pick up trash. We just need trash cans, Jeremy. We all have trash cans for them, correct?
Yep. They do a great job there, too.
Yep.
The stunt rider will be back this year, too. That's lighter, he'll be back.
Okay.
He'll also be doing an autograph session this year.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Matt has made a motion to approve the event form.
Second.
And Tyler is second to that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? We have an event. Thank you very much.
We don't need to give you any money, do we? Get it?
Good to go.
You're right.
I'm gonna sign off here.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our first item here. Second and third item all have to do with the hiring of Kurt Whitty. And the first one is just making a matter of record. Kurt's appointment as Superintendent of Building and Zoning. Phyllis has that document. It's been signed by both Kurt and myself. And it shows his initial date of service as what, the 24th of April, I believe, which was a week ago Monday. Yep, for the record. So if I could, if I could, I'd like to make this a matter of record. Motion from Tyler?
Second.
Second from Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you very much. And then the second thing, again pertaining to Kurt, as Tim explained, we have to have an amendment to our salary ordinance to allow for two department heads during this five-week time period until Roger departs, which looks like he has. He's out there. Tim, do you have an amendment? Here it's up.
I need it, I need the next number for an ordinance for the council.
I'll get it right this time, Phyllis. Number three.
Three?
It would be south. Ordinance number 2017-3, which would be an amendment to the salary ordinance. I'd be looking for a motion to approve it on all three readings this evening so that Kurt can receive a paycheck this week.
And I would like that, Kurt. Approve. And also, once we get beyond the adoption of the ordinance, I would ask council by a motion second to approve the superintendent's salary for the position that Kurt holds retroactive to his date of hire.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-3 on its first reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2017-3 on its first reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-3, short title, ordinance amending salary ordinance number 2016-15.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-3 on its first reading. Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-3 on its first reading. Would have roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp. Wiley Sir.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2017-3 on its second reading by short title.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-3 on its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-3, short title, ordinance amending salary ordinance number 2016-15.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-3 on its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds to pass ordinance 2017-3 on its second reading. All in favor? We have roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sir.
Thank you.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2013, sorry, 2017-3 on its third reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-3 in its third reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-3, short title, ordinance amending salary ordinance number 2016-15.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2017-3 on its third reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2017-3 so we can pay Kurt Friday. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Oh, whoops, excuse me. Roll call. I almost made it. Roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Sir.
Do it now.
Thank you. Ordinance 2017-3.
Actually, I need to make a motion to suspend the rules for...
Adoption on third reading.
I thought of that, right? Didn't think this was gonna be that big a deal, but I guess it is. We need to back up. How do you do that?
Well, you amend his motion and the amendment of the second to suspend the rules.
To include the suspension of the rules.
The Tim thing.
I know.
Okay, so included in Cam's initial motion would be to suspend the rules and allow the third reading by short title. And that was part of your motion? Was it part of the second? Who made the second?
Wiley.
I did.
Wiley did? I'm sure it was, wasn't it Wiley?
On third, on third reading?
On the third reading. Are you okay with this?
Yes. Thank you.
Second. All right, Tim.
I know.
This is, okay. We good to go, Tim?
Yeah.
All right.
We gotta make a motion to make it pay retroactive to the start date.
Yep. Thank you, Tyler. Tyler's made a second. I got two seconds again.
Okay, which one?
I think Craig was just a tad ahead of him. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. We good there, Tim?
Yep.
All right. Next, it's been in the news that we're gonna lose a council member for a year or so. In fact, he, actually, he leaves in July, but I think he's actually gonna be away late June. Is that right, Cam?
Correct.
And then gone for about a year. And I wanna make that a matter of record this evening. And Cam, I think maybe you have some things to cover.
Yeah, just that this is kind of, I don't wanna say it's a standard thing, but it's happened a lot in the reserve and I knew it was a possibility and it's happening. So I submitted a letter on, actually, April 18th to the Circuit Court Clerk. And per, it's Indiana Code Title V, Article 9, Chapter 4, for situations just as this. And in essence, in that letter, have requested a temporary leave of absence in my position in District 4 effective July 1st or may in effect no less than 374 days. And when I, whenever I do return, I'll, at that time, notify. I'll have 30 days to resume my position. But as such, the position is asked to be filled from somebody who lives in District 4 and is a Republican. And it will be appointed by the, our party chair. But anybody that's interested needs to contact our chairman, Jerry Walker.
Might I read that address?
There was...
No, I got it here. They are taking names until May 9th, which is a week from this evening. And at that time, then shortly after that, I think they, from what I understand, the county chairman will interview any available names that have applied. And then from there, it's his lone decision to decide who would replace Cam during his time away. And the address that those would be mailed to, Bob, for your sake, is Adams County Republican Party, PO Box 67, Decatur, Indiana. Phone inquiries may be made to Jerry Walker at 589-2208. Okay, so...
Is there any way, Bob, to get a picture of what District 4 is?
Well, we could get you that.
The map?
Yeah, we...
I've had several people approach me, "Where District 4?", rather than just say, "Well..."
Well, I could make that up for you. Ethan can do that for us tomorrow.
I just think you'd be helpful.
Oh, we're not even... Did you hear from him?
No, I haven't.
I haven't either. But yes, I can get, I can get that for you. It's the northeast section of Decatur. It's everything from US 27 East as far south as McDonald's. It's everything on the north side of Nutman, everything on the north side of Jackson. And then you take the imaginary line kind of from Jackson out to draw a diagonal over to East Monroe Street. And as you're heading east, it's everything on the left side of the street on East, on East Monroe Street, all the way out to Waters Edge where Cam lives. And everything to the north to 224, that northeast section. But I can get that for you.
Good part of it.
Yeah.
I'll be here to our first meeting in June.
Your last meeting will be the first meeting in June?
But whoever replaces me will officially take over in July.
Correct. Yeah, we'll be one seat shy on our second meeting in June. And the replacement would start the first meeting in July?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. What do we have to make a matter of record here anyhow? Is your...
We can make a matter of record of my letter that I submitted to the clerk.
I think that would make sense.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to make Cam's letter to the county clerk a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? And Cam, we, I'm sure I said for everyone in this room that we thank you for your service. And not only you, but everyone else who does so. And especially leaving your family for that period of time has got to be a challenge, not only on you, but on your wife and your children. And I totally respect you for everything that you've done and will do, so. Next thing I have here, our last council meeting, Prime Inc. came before us with their tax abatement concerns and it was declined. And after that, we had to follow up by offering them the opportunity to have a public hearing where they can state their case publicly. And they have declined that opportunity. So I basically just wanna make it a matter of record that Prime Inc. chose against having a public hearing.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to make that a matter of record. Phyllis, you got something?
Yeah, we have to pass the resolution.
Yes.
Gotta find the right one.
Got a number?
Four.
2017-4.
Just wanna make sure I got the right one. This one isn't such a short title.
Great.
I know.
You didn't want to drag it up.
I don't know. I'm getting old.
Did you sign the other one?
Read from the belly.
No. That one, it's the way it's outlined for same by salary ordinance, it's different or something. Okay.
So Tim, tell us about this now.
All right. Basically, after the initial determination by council not to allow the abatement for this year, Prime, the applicant for the abatement, is given the right to a public hearing that was scheduled for this evening. In contacting Mr. Collins at Prime, he indicated that they were not going to appear this evening, which is their prerogative. So at this time, if there's no presentation for the council to reconsider its initial determination, this time you have the right to adopt a resolution where you can either reverse your initial decision and grant the abatement, or you can adopt a resolution which reaffirms your initial determination. So at this time, I've got a resolution prepared either way. I'm assuming...
I bet I know which one to do.
That you're gonna make a motion to introduce the Resolution 2017-4, which affirms the initial determination and denies the abatement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
By short title.
Please. Thank you, Tyler. I have a motion and a second, Tyler and Matt, to adopt Resolution 2017-4 to affirm the decision to introduce Resolution 2017-4 to affirm our decision made at the last council meeting to deny Prime Inc.'s tax abatement. Tim?
Resolution 2017-4, short title, Resolution of the County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which determines whether or not New Prime Inc. has made reasonable efforts to comply with the Statement of Benefits Form SB 1 Real Property and Form SB 1 Personal Property filed with the City of Decatur regarding abatement of real property taxes and personal property taxes assessed improvements made to its real property and equipment located in Adams County, Indiana, and whether or not New Prime Inc. should be entitled to an abatement of real estate taxes and personal property taxes in 2017. And this particular resolution is making a determination that New Prime did not make a reasonable effort to substantially comply with employment and annual payroll as shown on the SB 1's file, based on the figures reported on their 2017 CF1s. And based upon that and the presentation previously made by New Prime Inc., County Council determines that New Prime Inc. is not eligible for the deductions in 2017, the denial and termination of which is confirmed by this resolution.
Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. A motion from Matt, second from Cam, to adopt Resolution 2017-4 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we need to read it again, Tim?
No.
Do we have to do a roll call or do you just...
Not on the resolution.
Not on the resolution. Okay.
After our meeting in Wabash that we attended and listened to that settlement of Minnesota, it even more affirmed to me our decision.
Yeah. That was, it was very interesting.
But on that, Mayor, still important to remember, the 10-year abatement process, they still are eligible for this full 10 years.
Make a last next year show improvement on employment and payroll.
We want them indicated.
As Matt says, substantial compliance.
It's just denial for this year.
Okay, next up on the agenda, Phyllis needs authorization to advertise for an additional appropriation of $125,000 from the Seated Fund for the demo project at the Schaefer Building over here, which was something we discussed two weeks ago this evening. Juggling of money, leaving us with needing to tap into the Seated Funds to the tune of $125,000 to have the total of $275,000 for that project. Any questions? Are you all with me on this?
With you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to give Phyllis the authorization to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
We got Matt and Craig with the motion and the second to authorize Phyllis the authorization to advertise for additional appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Next up, Tim, I have another ordinance. The final reading of ordinance 2017-2, changing the direction of the alley next to the former City Hall, which currently that short half-block is running to the north. It's going to change and run south that half-block. At least from the street to the rear of the building, I believe. This is pretty much where it actually would be, what happened. Jeremy, wants we pass this? How soon would the sign be changed out? Can't get it.
Probably first to next week.
Okay. In doing so, we've talked to Sherwin-Williams. I guess that was, I guess that was another, another whole issue. But in doing so, Sherwin-Williams will now enter off of Monroe Street. They're gonna have their trucks come in from the east heading west to make a turn into that alley. So there's room. I had a Sherwin-Williams truck driver out there looking. Plenty of room. I'm gonna, well, we'll get to this shortly when we get to this part of the meeting. The placement of the sign, kinda take that into consideration that, you know, that they're gonna be making a turn. I think where that sign is currently could interfere with that left-hand turn. Absolutely, there's that curb there. Yep. Yep. We might wanna paint that curb or something, I don't know. But anything we can to keep them off of it. So we're on our third reading here of that ordinance. If I could have a motion to introduce that?
Make a motion to place ordinance 2013, sorry, 2017-2 on its third reading by short title.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second for ordinance 2017-2 to be placed as third and final reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-2, short title, An Ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Schedule D of Chapter 77, Schedule 5 of Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, as supplemented by establishing one-way travel on portions of alleys located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, Madison Street, Second Street, and Third Street.
And before I have a call for adoption, are there any opposition to this here this evening before I do that? If not, Cam?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2017-2 on its third reading.
Oh, second. A motion and a second. Cam and Wiley, have a roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp. Wiley Sir.
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-2 has been adopted and I guess will go into effect as soon as Jeremy gets the sign placed or signage. We may need something on the backside of that also. Yeah. Talk about it. Then the next thing pertains to Sherwin-Williams also, and that was the closing of this alley over here, just to the south of where we're sitting, running from the backside of the Schaefer Building to Second Street. And at our last meeting, we kinda tabled that pending me talking to Sherwin-Williams before Melissa would apply for the grant. Talked to Sherwin-Williams. They just said, "Hey, it's all about having a delivery route to get their truck there." And I told her, asked them if they would contact their corporate office. They said, "Sure." And the very next day, I was going up to get in my vehicle and I saw Sherwin-Williams' truck turn in the alley. So I thought, "Ha, I'll go talk to the truck driver." So I trotted around over there to Third Street, waited on him to get situated. Said, "Do you deliver here a lot?" And he said, "I quite regularly, not all the time. There's other drivers, but quite regularly." And I said, "What do you think about, you know, the route you have to complete this alley?" He says, "It's terrible. It says, "We barely have enough room to, you know, clear our mirrors." And so we showed him, you know, the new option of coming in off Monroe Street. He says, "That would be much better, but I would like to make one suggestion. And that would be when they come in off of Monroe Street, they're gonna have to turn to the right and back up, get unloaded, and then pull back out on Third Street like they currently do." He asked, "And sometimes they'll be able to make that sweeping turn with no problem. What's gonna depend on is how many business owners are parked up against their building. If he makes a delivery at 8:00 in the morning and Jabba Dean is busy and there's a lot of cars parked up against the buildings, then he can't make the sweeping wide turn." So he suggested that we maybe eliminate the two end parking spaces in that parking lot. Would minus two parking spaces. And I don't think that's a problem at all. Jeremy shaking his head. So...
That's my favorite parking spot. The shortest way to the paint.
Like to, so that they can get your paint. Jeremy?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Did you have conversation on that you'd be?
I did not.
Because you ever remember they'd be a lot of power and aggression. So whatever happens there permanently is gonna have to be accessible to you now, either off the street or off across the alley.
Are you talking about for the semi-turning in there or for just anything?
No.
For the, everything? No, we didn't notify them. We will. Yep. We can do that.
Common courtesy that we need to discuss that.
Contact...
He already did.
Okay, I'll get ahold of him. This one over here. Oh, you are talking this one? You're talking about the... Okay.
I thought you were talking about the one over here by the park.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
No, they're not gonna care if they have to go the wrong way on...
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that, Melissa, maybe you can help me out here in, with this grant money that we got. It's gonna be something artistic in that alley. But also, the business sits right next to the alley. What's it called, Melissa?
Woodwings.
Woodwings. Yeah, woodwings. They tend to unload in that alley. One way or another, it, we don't want to completely block it off permanent. You know, it needs to...
That's the only thing I'm cautious about.
Yeah, we were in Wabash the other day and we noticed that they basically just had a sign that blocked it, okay? I mean, someone could move that sign and still pull in. There's a number of ways that we can show not to drive through there, but yet when need be, someone can get in there. So Melissa did apply. We did receive the grant, right, Melissa? $5,000, $5,000 grant? And so we're good to go. I don't need to vote on anything there. Just a matter of letting you all know. And then now, the big item for the evening, the Madison Street. I emailed all the council members information about Madison Street. We met with Kevin McCrory last week and the people from JPR about when, how to go about doing Madison Street, whether to do it this year, whether to do it next year, and the pros and cons of doing that. pros and cons of doing that. And as I said, I saw, did all of you bring that with you by any chance? If not, I have copies of this, so we can properly discuss it. I'm just going to kind of go at least through this top portion of it. The estimated cost of the Madison Street project from demo to completion
Oh, please.
is somewhere between 550 and 575,000 dollars. And that's after we've made several cuts with JPR, and I think we're down to the point where we can't cut much more, if anything. Funds that the city has or will have, we currently have roughly 235,000 dollars in the capital campaign fund that we initiated in 2014 when we first applied for stellar, and there are still contributions coming into that fund. So that's why I say it's approximately 235,000, it may vary just a little bit. We have 100,000 dollars that we set aside at the, at the beginning of this year, or end of last year, when we did our budgeting for 2017, to go toward the Madison Street project. We do not have yet, but will have, a, a, I guess it's a grant, and we're calling it, through IH-CDA, it's called Creating Places, or it's a patronicity fundraiser, where if we can raise 50,000 dollars, then IH-CDA will match another 50,000, which would be for a total of 100,000. And we're very confident we can raise at least 50,000 for that, but 50,000 is the most that they will match. And then we have in-kind services by the city with Jeremy's crew on demo, and some of the utility work and et cetera, which has a value of roughly 40,000 dollars. So if you total all that up, we're at 475,000 dollars. So we're 75 to 100,000 dollars shy, as is. And then we have option one and option two as to when to construct the project. If we do the project this year, the bidding period, and this is, this comes right directly from JPR, Kevin McCrory, the bidding period would be between May 24th and June 21st, construction between July and mid-November, with the potential completion in the November of 2017. Advantages of doing it this year, the plaza, it would be ready to use by year's end, which there aren't that many things beyond November, but also could be utilized for all of 2018's needs, the sculpture tour, the Decatur, or any other downtown festivals that go, that take place, it could be utilized. We would utilize the capital campaign funds that have been donated, started in, starting in 2014, and we'd actually show those people who have been putting that money in that fund that we're doing something with their money. So I think that would be considered an advantage. Disadvantages of doing it in 2017, number one is the funding, where do we come up with the rest of the money? And number two, bidding during, we would be taking bids, May 24th to June 21st of this year, later this month, that's the contractor's busiest time of the year, so our potential for low quotes is, is less likely, and potential for higher quotes is, is likely. If the bids come in, however, as Jeremy pointed out to me the other day, if the bids come in too high, we can always reject them, change the plan, and do it in 2018. Jumping down to option two, what the advantages and disadvantages of doing it in 2018? If we wait, we could bid it in mid-January to late February of 2018, with construction beginning sometime in March and likely being completed sometime mid-June, and that's all subject to weather conditions. Advantages of waiting and doing it in 2018 is, number one, the potential for better estimates from the contractors due to bidding in winter months, that'd be looking for projects coming up, and would likely be a little more aggressive with their quotes. Also allows the city to budget more funding in the 2018 budget to go toward that project. Disadvantages of completing it in 2018 is that that would not be ready to use until likely mid-July of 2018, thus sculpture tour couldn't be, couldn't take place there next year, neither could Decatur. Most, the early on festivals of 2018 still wouldn't be able to utilize the plaza, it would be 2019 before it would be available for those. So I sent all this out to the council members, I would like to discuss this this evening. Again, one last thing I really haven't brought into this yet, and I'm looking at Dan, is there's a lot of utility work to be done now, down there, as far as water, sewer, whatever. I don't think the sewer's a big problem, but the water lines aren't cheap, and we have water lines on Master Drive that we discussed in the Board of Works meeting this evening, that's a few hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not sure where we are with funding to do that. Dan, do you have any idea?
Yeah, I don't know if Jeremy has any solid numbers yet from Madison Street, that's going to make a big difference. But if, you know, we're going to put 250,000 dollars in Madison Street, I don't want to drain the operating going down that far. If someone could be put in the project, that's great, but I don't think the Water Department can eat a whole bunch right after doing Madison Street.
Master Drive, yeah. Right after doing Master Drive, which could be in the couple, high 200,000s or so.
There's a couple different ways we can do the water and the utility work down there. We really can't make a decision on the utilities until I get
Master.
More of the estimates back of the suppliers, so, you know, it's just going to have to be direction for both, for you guys, if you choose to try to make it happen this year, or, you know, what's your decision is.
Yeah, there's not a lot of services down that street, so you're looking at hydric and everything. I don't think it'd be a huge deal, but, and like you said, until you get the estimates back.
No, no, for sure. Madison Street, long-term, I didn't figure that one out today, it's absolutely not a lot of work. Other work that would have to be done at some point, you know, I'm saying today or tomorrow, but, you know, we need to look at that and work forward. But to get out of your room down there is not out of the question, but, you know, it's going to take a little time, take a little coordination to make sure.
Yep.
You know, talk to such a.
And before we even enter into this discussion, we need to keep in mind, as we start our budget process for 2018, some of the things that we're going to, to take upon in 2018, like, likely the first floor of.
The Lofts.
The Loft Project, yeah, Music House. You know, that's when Biggs Inc. is, is done over there, and they deed that first floor back to us, it's not going to be totally finished. I mean, it's likely going to have some drywall, but if we want to do any other walls, or doors, or, depending on how we want to furnish it, that's going to be on us, that's not part of his, his project. So, that's something we're somehow going to have to budget in the next year.
How does the, I mean, I saw the note in here that you won't be able to tell how much is available until after Master Drive, given that we're rebidding that, the timeline on that, how does that?
I'm looking more at the estimates coming back from the materials needed, the utility work down here.
Okay.
Pretty much no option on Master, so it's going to get out.
Okay.
Dan and I discussed that, and Phyllis will also put some money towards that, that portion of it. I really need to sit down with Dan and go through some of the, the little bit of numbers that I got today, early this evening, and then kind of determine, there's a little, a little piece of the design, to make sure that he is comfortable with what needs to happen. Basically, long-term, what you're going to do is you're going to have to replace what's on First Street, what's on Madison, and what on Second. Not saying that it's the right way, but initially, long-term, whatever thing that you're looking at downtown, those three streets are going to have to be done, and even further, but, you know, you're going to have to base that in, you know, as the project progresses and into the different phases. So, basically, I think what would be a good option tonight is just decide if you, if you are comfortable moving forward, if we can make all the utility work out, if not, obviously, it would be something that we would definitely have to, have on the plate.
Okay, when we met with.
By the end of 2018.
When we met with JPR, and he gave us the date of bidding period between May 24th, June 21st, we can always move that back a little.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's not etched in stone, it doesn't have to be then, that's it, that was just his theoretical proposal, you know?
Yeah, and Andrew did call me today, and he's within about 10 days, or getting ready. But he said the exact same thing, he said if they.
You mean for the 90%?
If they need to adjust one way or another, he said, that's greater than what them, we would know by then, you know, by, by the time that they're, they're ready to move out. If we're progressing forward for this year, or if it's all.
I mean, I know, I know, a meeting or two meetings ago, we kind of roughly brought this up, and the comment was made, you know, like, let's do it this year, it's going on. So that's why I've tried to throw this together. I just want to do the right thing for the, the city and be fiscally responsible in doing so.
I guess, I, I'd like to look at this as actually two phases of the Madison Street project. The first phase is the utilities, and getting all of that work done that needs to be done. The second phase of Madison Street project then is the actual street construction and developing the plaza. So it is Madison Street project in works, but for the plaza itself, we know the utilities need to be completed. So why can't that be put out as two phases of one project? Madison Street project, phase one, the underground work.
I think the phase one, what you're referring to as phase one is mostly going to be done by city.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
So we don't have to put it out because it's.
I know, but what I'm saying is, we have started Madison Street project.
He's just saying, it's moving.
Oh, it's moving forward.
Great. Um, I, I think that the best thing we do is find out what it's going to take for the Water and Sewer Department to finish up Master Drive, number one, which I, I would assume we're planning on doing, we want to make sure we take care of all the infrastructure before we pave that, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, I think that's kind of what we've all come to the consensus of. The second thing is, is my biggest concern, number one, will be getting that Schaefer Building down prior to any of the other start on the.
Utilities.
Madison Street, and we plan for that, we have money budgeted for that, to tear that Schaefer Street, or Schaefer Building down, and the timeline on that.
That's part of Madison Street?
I agree, I agree, I agree with that, but I'm just saying, I think first thing we ought to do before we try to dive into the infrastructure on Madison Street is get that building down and get the, make that safe.
Well, I thought we already had that set.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, that's going to.
We're waiting to hear back from Kevin Biggs and his tax people. I talked to Mike Bleh earlier today, he was going to try to get back with me before the council meeting this evening, he did not. So, I have a resolution ready to go that establishes the revolving loan, and, you know, once we are firm on the terms and conditions of the loan agreement and the note, then we can execute that. And I also have an ordinance that we need to amend the CEDAT plan to increase capital improvement projects and also broaden the scope of what would be allowed to include the revolving loan. And then Phyllis would have to get through the additional appropriation of the use of CEDAT funds. Once all of that's done, we can transfer the funds to Kevin, and the matter, or the Schaefer Building can, can be demolished.
Yep. And first step so that is the remediation, right, Jeremy? And I mean, that's.
Right.
Yeah, where we're at right now is Kevin met with the contractor last Wednesday, and they were supposed to talk again today, so, I don't know, it's, it falls back in our court just.
I mean, this, the process of the Schaefer Building coming down, it's in process, but to actually have a set date that that's going to start, it could be anywhere from 30 days to 60 days. It's just hard to.
Aaron was pretty, pretty well in agreement with the timeframe.
The proposal that.
That we talked about early on.
Yeah.
Is just working out the final details. Once they get that worked out, get their internal details figured out, no time at all, it's going to be down.
Now, the, the language that I presented to them requires the completion of demolition by July 15th. Now, we'll find out whether or not that's doable, it may get pushed back to the end of July, but that's our goal, is to try to get it down sooner than later.
So, still within the timeframe of kind of the plan of starting construction in July?
Look, we're trying to keep that option open.
So that, Schaefer Building comes down and is cleaned up by July 15th, per contract, go, could be the end of July, but construction could continue per this timeline in 2017, July through November. So, is your comments, is it based on trying to show progress?
Correct. In case it doesn't get done in the, the main portion of the project until the spring of 2018.
The top side of it.
Right.
So we have, I guess my only concern with that is that you do that, but then you leave, and what, what are we leaving the street looking like? I mean, if you, why not just finish it off? I guess is my point.
Well, I'm not saying not finish it off, what I'm saying is, we're not, when, there's been concern for all along about us showing that we're moving forward, and if we're, I'm just saying, we are moving forward, and we need to include that in that dialogue, the Schaefer Building, the utilities, that's part of this whole project. That's what I'm saying. Rather than thinking of them as totally separate entities, they are dependent upon each other.
But I kind of get the feeling, Jeremy, from you, that, may I'm reading into this, you're looking for direction from us, because are you, are you going to start this project if we say we're not doing Madison this year? Would you be inclined to move forward with doing any utility work on Madison and First Street?
Get the money there, definitely. So you. You, you gotta, you really need to set some goals, and hopefully you, you reach all those goals, if not, you carry some in 2018, and right to you.
I think the importance of the council making a decision, giving some guidance, is that if you are going to pursue moving forward yet this year, to try to get it completed by November, you got to get moving now. We got to get the bids out, we got to get the bid dates set, and, you know, if, you know, that takes time. I mean, if you're looking probably 30, 30, 45, maybe 60 days out before construction would actually take place, which kind of coincides with what we're trying to do with taking down the Schaefer Building, but if you wait another 30 or 60 days, now you've just lost a month of the construction schedule that you're trying to.
But where's the 100, 100 to 125,000?
That's the disadvantage of doing it immediately. So, and the, and the possibility that you would have higher bids, because it's not the best time to bid for the project.
My personal feeling is, is let's get the utilities knocked out and take care of on Madison, on Master Drive, get the Schaefer Building torn down, make it, take a look and assess at that time, and our budget process will come up in August, September, is that correct?
Actually, earlier.
If we can work better.
Budget. If we can get that Schaefer Building down, then we'll have a little bit more of a handle on where we are with our utilities. I believe that, that people will start seeing if we get that Schaefer Building down.
You are suggesting to, to construct it in 2018, is what you're saying?
I'm saying take bids in the fall.
That's, so. You're saying construct it in 2018?
Hey, in the, yes, the winter of, the fall of 2017, possibly the winter when the prices of construction and bidding go back down.
And.
Because we're not talking about asphalt pavement here.
Nope.
This work can be done in the winter for the Madison Street project. It's not dependent on 45-plus degree weather.
It's not asphalt, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
There's concrete.
I mean, everybody's busy right now.
So you're saying, you're saying maybe an option three?
I'm saying.
Not bidding it in mid-January?
I'm saying tear down a Schaefer Building whenever we can. I'm saying tear down a Schaefer building whenever we can, uh, and I'm saying during that, creating places H I, H C D A patronicity, uh, I say we take those bricks in that center portion that we have, uh, on the drawings over there and possibly sell those built, those bricks to people to put their names on them as a patronicity situation, we create a campaign, campaign after we see that Schaefer building come down, or is that, is that a timeline thing?
It's a timeline, it's patronicity, thirty, thirty days or nothing.
Right, but when does that start?
When do we start it?
Well, that's my point.
Now, what, isn't there, that program-
They have an allotment of money and it'll run out eventually.
So what happens?
What's the timeline?
Whenever the money runs out, it's over.
Yeah, but what's the start time?
It started.
We can, we can start whenever we would like, but as soon as we click that button, the thirty days to raise the money, the project has to be completed and full within eighteen months.
Within, what's eighteen months?
And to be clear, the raising of that money is using currently pledged capital campaign funds that have not come in, in 2017. So the stream is there, but-
Question?
Just, uh, budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, will that hold for the next year or can you rebudget it?
We can, like, encumber it, is that, but that'd be the word that we-
Well, just rebudget it.
Rebudget it.
I know, I know a lot of thought and groups and engineers have brought into this project, um, it is a very, very big investment in downtown, the start and everything going on, and I know you guys went to Wabash the other day. Would it be smart to go to some other cities that have done some things and see if there's things they really were glad they did, things they were against doing? I mean, not just the pavers, but the, the planners and the benches, the tie-downs, I mean, it might be, dozens of engineers say it might be a good idea to talk to other cities and see if-
Well, it's funny you ask that, because just in going to Wabash the other day, I think all five of us saw something over there that we might be able to incorporate here, uh, that would be much cheaper than the benches, much cheaper, and look just as nice and still suit the-
But even like the pavers, you know, see if, after they did it, it looked really great, but three years later, were they happy with what happened?
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
I agree too.
I, I like the idea of getting the project started with the Schaefer building, going into budget here.
I think what you're kind of saying is almost option three, which would be, where option two says bid it in mid-January, you're saying maybe bid it more toward November, December?
Yeah. That's when the contractors are going to be hungry.
Yep, and, and then-
And this isn't that big of a project.
Right.
I mean-
I don't have a vote, it's just an idea. What do you guys think?
Let me ask you this, Jeremy, if, if you did what Craig is suggesting and you bid it in November, would that, would that give you the ability to finish the project in time for, like, the sculpture walk, which is in early June?
From what, from the way JPR talked the other day, they didn't-
Yeah, about four and a half, five months, construction window.
And you're going to have some weather interference in the wintertime, but if you, if you were able to award the contract in November or mid-November, then is there some preliminary work that can be done that would speed up the process of completion in the spring?
Well, we have to do all the removals, so one is going to have to operate to get all the work done. What I'm saying, removals from building to building and that whole block as the contractor works along. Get some of that figured in there.
So you're out in front.
The more I can think about it, it's, you know, it's not a, it's not a deal where it's easy.
Okay, if we had, if we knew we had the hundred thousand dollars available to make up that difference, would we be saying move forward with this? Or is the concern the construction cost given the time of year?
Yeah, what's the bigger concern?
I got, my bigger concern is the hundred thousand dollars. I don't know where we have the hundred thousand dollars to do it all in 17. I'd love to, but Phyllis, do we have a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, because we're already transferring, or we're putting additional money to see our cash balance and what's appropriated, so it only leaves like a hundred and seventy in there, but you hate to run it too short in case a project does run over.
Is this new estimate, is this the new estimate that the now, as of him coming through projects, taking out whatever? Because I know they have sewer budgeted in there.
Yep.
What was the original estimate, do you remember?
Six something or seven something, wasn't it?
Six, fifty, and seventy.
Right.
I'm a, I'm kind of along the same lines as Dan about seeing what works and what doesn't work. Pavers make me nervous, I know, and I'm going to probably put my foot in my mouth and stuff on people's toes, I know people put a lot of work into that plan and the design of that, but as a city council, we're responsible for the funds, and at the same token, if something gets designed that's way out of reach, that the costs would not have to be that much, as far as when it was getting designed, was there budgets in mind designing it in the subcommittees?
Well, initially, we were hoping to go to the Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership and probably get a couple hundred thousand dollars from them.
I understand.
And that's went by the wayside.
Right.
So, that's, that's why we're short.
Does the scale, I mean, does the scale need to come back? Does it need to be bid in late this year with some alternates in it, with a different scale option that the price could adjust up and down? I guess that's what I'm saying. Does it, I don't want to cut all the cost out of it and make it look like a cheap street, but in the same token, it's worth two blocks, that's a half a million dollars.
From everything that was always put before on the cost of streetscaping, uh, with all the stellar plans, this is actually under the per-block, and this is a much more, much greater, more decorative enhanced block than what was always proposed before, um, just from a perspective.
I have another question. Do you have two phases on this year where you have the hundred thousand dollars budgeted, can you reply again next year for an additional hundred thousand dollars for phase two?
We could appropriate more money in our budget for next year, yes.
And that would make up the extra hundred thousand dollars?
Oh yeah, if we wait till 2018, the funding, everything is in place now, will be in place at the end of this year, and we could appropriate more money in next year's budget and we would have plenty of funding to do this.
I would argue that you're going to be down fifty thousand dollars for patronicity.
Well, I'd argue that apply for it, give the fifty thousand dollars, we got eighteen months to finish it, if you still do it next. I understand you're going to be taking a little bit of a risk that if you don't get it done, you're going to have to pay it back, but if you have a plan to do it next year, then you could fund it and-
If you have eighteen months, it's not easy.
It's not easy on projects.
We get the building down, we tear out the streets, get the infrastructure, and I can't imagine, how long's that block, Jeremy? Five hundred foot?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty feet, and it's fifty-six feet wide from building to building. Yeah, it stepped it off today, so, I mean, I don't think it's an eighteen-month project.
I really think you could start the-
It's three months.
Patronicity?
You could start it, I guess tomorrow or in a month or so, you'd still, well, maybe a couple months, but you'd still have that.
Oh, we're gonna, yeah, regardless, I think we're going to be done within eighteen months, from, of now.
I think that we get that Schaefer building down, the people start seeing that we're moving, we finish up Master Drive, get that paved, make people happy, get the roads better again.
And we can get with Kevin McCrory and ask him for a nice, large-size colored rendition of that, that we can put out in lobby and whatever, let people see what's going to happen.
Options.
Yeah. So, is, by consensus, it kind of sounds like we're not wanting to complete it this year, uh, rather than maybe start it-
I'll go on record and say that if we had the money, I'd say do it.
Oh, and I would be right there supporting you.
Well-
I think we need to put our options back.
So, what are you saying, Cam?
You'd have money to do the project.
If we had, if we had the money to do the project, but what I'm also hearing is that we need to go back and look at it again. I don't-
I, I don't think we need to go back and look at it again, I think that's what we have the committee for, um, if, you know, if the city council wants to be that committee, then let's have city council be that committee, but we have a committee doing that, uh, they've been working hours with JPR to make those decisions, uh, they've made a lot of cuts, and, uh, the other day when we met with, with the people from JPR, I think everyone there was pretty well pleased, right Melissa?
And if we can put these in the stages and phase it out, then, and if it, then would fall into the next year, that hundred thousand that was missing will be there.
Absolutely. I just don't think there's any way we're going to have it done by the festival season next year probably though.
Maybe not all of it, but-
Yeah, maybe the Fall Fest, Kikianga Festival time they're in. I mean, there's a chance, but better chance that it wouldn't be.
It would really be cool if we would take some of our department heads that actually have to deal with this stuff when we build this street, how we're going to deal with it, the plant, the potted plants, the park benches, the snow removal, the infrastructure, if we would get these people involved, and how we're going to maintain this for the next thirty years, and take those people to these different locations and make a solid decision with their input instead of an engineering firm from Fort Wayne, I mean, it, there's people that want to be up from Main Street that's been on the design committee, I think that they need to be involved in that too, but these are the ones that are going to maintain it. It's not going to be me, it's not going to be that engineering firm as soon as they get their check, it's not going to be the people on the committee at Main Street, it's going to be Dan Rickert, it's going to be Jeremy Gilbert, and it's going to be the sewer department, and I'm just saying, I think these are the people that need to be in on the decision-making of what we do with that street for the final capacity. I say we start with the tear down of that Schaefer building, and we take these guys and we shop this thing out, make sure this is exactly what went. After discussing that with the mayor of Wabash the other day, he said, "We made decisions that were not right, guys." He told us that, and I think these are the people that are going to take care of this infrastructure in the future.
When you said, when you say he, you means Mayor Long over at Wabash?
Yes, yeah, I mean, he made it clear, he made it clear as a bell, we planted the wrong trees, we put them in the wrong spot, we did the wrong thing with these pavers, it looked cool on paper, but when it came down to it, we got to maintain this thing, and I think the people that need to be involved are the ones that are going to maintain it, the guys that are going to make those decisions. So I would say, if that's the case, let's get this Schaefer building down, let's look at budget times, let's get the infrastructure in, let's get the roads paved, and let's take these people and take, I'll go with them, I'd be happy to.
And, and I think we're all in agreement with you, I think what you're saying goes, we want, we, we need to let JPR know that this option one is off the table, and we're not going to take it to bid May 24th, option one's off the table. We don't know when Schaefer's coming down.
I don't want to start the project till the Schaefer's building down.
Exactly, so that's what I'm saying, if option one is off the table, and option two is maybe, but if, if we can start sometime even earlier than, uh, the mid-January for bidding.
Oh yeah.
If we can start it late this year and be ready to break ground, I mean, who knows? I mean, if we have a terrible winter, nothing's going to happen in January, February, but if we have another mild winter, they could get in there and, and work in January, February, so, uh, but at least if we have, if we take it to bid late this year, try to get aggressive quotes, and weather permitting, we can start it whenever. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Craig?
I, I mean, I hate to be negative, but these guys are the ones that are going to maintain it. I'd really like to get their input.
And no one's being negative, I, you know, I think in our heart of hearts, we would all love to do it this year, but we all want to do, we all want to do the right thing.
I agree.
Dan and Jeremy, how do you guys feel about it? How do you guys feel about what Craig's suggesting?
I, I totally agree, I really do. I mean, and like I said, nothing against anybody that designed it, but you had, I'm not even sure who did, there was two people on that design committee, you guys weren't really in on that design, and like you said, they designed it and then everybody just took that, but we don't know what, what's been done other places and if it works, I, that's all I was trying to say, find out if that works.
And they, and they have offered that to us, I mean, JPR has told us the other communities where they've done work, that, where we could go look, yes. Melissa, you got anything you could add? Come on, you're holding back.
I just think we need to take a step back here, you know, and take care of people we're having, if there's times that might fail, you know, it could all in place, if not, it could hurt, when that time comes.
Okay, I don't even, I mean, I think it's by consensus here, we're saying that, uh, we need to let JPR know that we're not going to bid this, this month, we don't want to go out to bid this month, and that we'll basically just have to get back to them when we do want to put it out to bid, we'll continue on the process. This, this, uh, plan back here is not final, that's sixty percent phase, I mean, there's a lot of time yet for all kinds of adjustments to this plan. Uh, Jeremy, when you said you talked to whomever-
Andrew.
Andrew, and he was saying that it'd have the ninety percent-
He would, he said within probably ten days, he would be ready.
To have this marked up as the, as a ninety percent?
No, it'd be a hundred.
A hundred percent?
So at that point, it's ready for bid, right?
If it's accepted.
If it's accepted.
If the design and everything that goes along with it was accepted.
So maybe in the next couple of weeks, we need to do some road trips.
I'd be happy to help, I'd be happy to.
It would be ready, Tyler, but even if it's agreed upon and it's ready, it could just be shelved and advertised when that time comes.
But at that point, if they're making any changes, they're working backwards, correct?
Somewhat. So, I guess at this point, you just need to let them know, you just got to hold out. If that's your direction, if you want to look at other things here.
In between now and our next meeting, we should know further on the timeline of the demo of Schaefer.
We should know that, and I would hope that in the next two weeks, uh, a few of us at least, might be able to get together and make a couple, maybe a couple of afternoon road trips. We're not going to go Southern Indiana, where I mean, there's work up right here in Northeast Indiana, I think Woodburn was one of them where they've done work, I'm not sure where else, so.
I would ask that you include the current committee that's working on this, if you'd like to invite them on the road show, like you said, they've put in many, many details-
Absolutely, I agree.
... with the, the designs-
I agree.
-in a thoughtful way, so please don't leave them out of that.
And I, I understand, you're probably going to accept what's accepted, I don't want to step on their toes either, but the same token, I have to answer to the taxpayer that's funding it. I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I appreciate all the time they spent, but we, I have to answer the taxpayer that we're putting the money into the project, into the design, I mean, it's all, I guess it's a little bit different story if you're getting a big grant to take care of half of it, because in essence, I'm not, I mean, they still pay taxes in that money, but it's coming from a different entity in return.
I, I hope I didn't, I, I think, I think I said that it would be great to have people on that committee and then also department heads, I, I didn't mean to exclude anybody on that, I just think it'd be great to put some eyes on it from the department heads that are going to maintain it over the next twenty to forty years.
Okay, so, yeah, it sounds like what you're saying is you're going to hold off until at least the late fall to bid the project, because you want to give time to complete the master project, uh, you want to get the Schaefer building down, you want to get the utility work done on Second Madison Street, you want to bid it out at a time when you're getting more competitive bids, and that then gives you the time to add additional funding in your 2018 budget.
Yep. And, and-
Just remember that you're going to have to budget and work towards other projects, including the First Street loss next year, which is not going to be insignificant, and you might want to think about including Mark's heating, old heating building with that.
That's a big one.
That's something out there that we're going to have to, you know, purchase back from utility.
So is there a point?
But just-
Keep that in mind, a lot of stuff comes along.
You don't want, you don't want to tap into funds that we have now, but-
This isn't the complete wall project.
We don't wanna tap into the funds we have, but... But next month, or next year, they're still gonna be more expensive, so I think, I think that the ceded reserves that we have now, we will tap into next year. That's all I'm saying.
Plus, we all want to, at some point, look at the second story of this building.
I agree with...
We're not gonna pay cash for that, though.
To me, when you look at the priorities and what we've already committed to, that's a nice to have, but I think we have other commitments that are gonna be priorities. So...
Okay, I think I've got my answer, and I'll communicate with Kevin McCrory and move on from there. With that, I think that was the last thing on the agenda that I had. Tim, you got something here?
I do. As I said earlier, there's, in order to put everything in place, in order to get the revolving loan to Kevin Biggs' company that's doing the Artist Law Project, we need to amend the ceded plan, the two-year ceded plan, to increase the level of funding for capital improvement projects, and also to expand the scope of that to include street scape projects as well as revolving loans to developers under the code for use on capital improvement projects. If you remember, we were talking about moving money using rainy day funds for different projects as opposed to what we originally envisioned, and shifting that away from the Schaefer project using ceded funds. So, in order to provide sufficient funds, we need to increase capital improvement projects by $125,000. I think that's what Phyllis is gonna be advertising as an additional appropriation. That would increase your funding for capital improvement projects under your two-year plan from its current level of, I think it was 660,000 to 785,000, and then, as I said, the capital improvement projects would include but not be limited to environmental remediation projects, street scape projects, and the issuance of revolving loan funds, loans to developers for capital improvement projects. So, in order to do that, you have to amend your two-year ceded plan, and that has to be done by an ordinance.
And you have that ordinance ready to go?
I have that ready to go, if you're so inclined to introduce it.
And would you suggest two readings?
Two readings and then a final table for the third and final, that'll give us time to, you know, pursue the additional appropriation.
Sounds like a plan. Cameron?
Make a motion to place ordinance 2017-4 by short title on its first reading.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, place ordinance 2017-4, which amends ordinance 2015-16 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-4, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends ordinance number 2015-16.
Make a motion to pass ordinance, place, no.
Yeah, pass.
Pass ordinance 2017-4 on its first reading. Second.
A motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-4 on its first reading, and we'll have a roll call vote?
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschow?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulencamp?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2017-4 on second reading by short title.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-4 on its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-4, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends ordinance number 2015-16.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-4 on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-4, whatever, roll call vote?
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschow?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulencamp?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes.
And that was the second reading. Cam?
Make a motion to table ordinance 2017-4 for its third and final reading until our next meeting on May 16.
Second. A motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-4 until May 16th at our next meeting for final passage at that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Thanks, Tim. What else you got?
Well, as I said, there will be a resolution that will need to be adopted once we have the final language in place, subject to approval from Kevin Biggs' tax council, but that resolution will actually establish a revolving loan fund that the ceded funds will be moved into in order to place the loan. That loan will occur once the loan agreement that's attached as an exhibit to the resolution has been executed by the city and Mr. Biggs' company, and a promissory note is signed and consistent with the terms that are also attached to that resolution. So, as soon as I hear back, I'm hoping that that's something that we can do at the next meeting.
Good. Okay, anything else for them? Melissa? Under mayor's report this evening, I have something I need to share with you all. Tonight, I wanna pay tribute to something deserving of all of our respect. Like good people, we all get put out to pasture at some point in our life. Well, tonight, I wanna remember something that lived to be 153 years old by my calculations. I figure the normal life cycle of something like this might be 15 years in human years, and this particular item I'm paying tribute to this evening not only lived 27 human years, it's still alive. However, while still alive, this old timer has moved into the supposed nursing home for its latter years. So, what am I referring to?
Great.
Huh, that works.
Raise your screen up a little.
You just turned... Hold on, she's plugging back in. So, what am I referring to? If you haven't figured it out by now, I'm referring to the car that Mr. Tim Baker drove around the past 27 years. A little over a week ago, Mr. Baker sold his 1990 Toyota Celica. Anyone that knows Tim... It gone off again. We have to pause, we have to have the PowerPoint. No more fixing it, huh? It's gone. Didn't die.
Gosh.
There we go. All right. Anyone that knows Tim under the age of 40, or shoot, maybe, maybe 50 years old, can't even remember him driving anything other than the red Celica. I asked his daughter Anne about the car and wanna read her remembrance of Tim's long-loved red car. Anne Report reads as follows, and I'm reading this from her perspective. Dad's car, better known as the Red Rocket, was a 1990 Toyota Celica. He loved that car. When he bought it from the dealership in Fort Wayne, it had been used by the dealership as a loaner. When he first bought the car, all three of us Baker kids, now adults, were young enough and small enough to fit in the backseat of the car. It was very new age, complete with a bag phone. That's right, a bag phone, the precursor to a cellphone, and get this, it was still in the trunk when Dad sold it last week. It also had a tape deck for which Dad joined a Tape of the Month Club to make sure he always had good tunes in his car. You'd have to ask him, but he may still secretly be a member of that cassette tape club. We loved, we kids loved getting to ride with Dad in the Celica. It was sporty and fast and red. Dad always had a bit of a lead foot. On several occasions, I believe each of us kids had the opportunity to be with him when he got stopped for speeding. We watched and learned valuable lessons like how to safely pull over, how to politely address an officer, and learn what information's produced for the officer. But most awe-inspiring was how effective our Dad was at just being able to get away with a warning. Our Uncle Mark Frickie can attest to this one, when Dad got two warnings in one day. In Dad's defense, when you drive the same cherry-red sporty car for nearly 27 years, and you run late all the time, and you tend to discount travel time, you're likely gonna make up for it by driving fast, and if you drive fast, you're bound to get pulled over a few times. It was a sad day last week when Dad came back to the office and announced that he had just sold the Celica. I know he loved that car. I took some solace in hearing Dad describe the new owner. He's a collector with 26 other cars. He saw the Celica and from the pictures thought it would be a great car for one of his nieces. However, when he came to pick up the vehicle, he said he may just keep it for himself. Dad took great care of his car, and I think he felt good knowing it was gonna be a new owner, be going to a new owner who has a passion for cars, would maintain it and make sure it was driven and enjoyed. I'm glad it will have a new life, but I already miss being able to spot Dad around town in the Red Rocket. So, this evening, I decided it was a proper, I know my kids have never really seen Tim driving anything other than that red Celica, and so I just thought it was proper tonight to pick on Tim a little bit. Make homage to him. That was very city council-like, I don't know. I had to do it. That's all I have, department heads. Dan? Greg? Les? Roger?
Yep, Kurt, that is getting off to a fairly good start. We're getting long yet. Transition's going good so far, so he might have something else to say.
Good to go. Jeremy? Anne?
Yep.
Melissa? I wanna thank Melissa for the helps with the Red Rocket photos. I provided her the pictures of Tim, and she took it from there. Council members, any comments? Tim, any final words?
Well, a couple things. I will say, uh, thank you for that, that was great. But, you know, I will mention, you know, with the discussion that council had this evening about the use of funds and trying to, you know, plan for this, if you look around at what's happening in Decatur right now, I mean, a lot of these projects, the groundwork was, started being laid five years ago, and we're starting to see the fruition of it, and if you think about it, we're talking about the Master Drive project getting finished up, the nature preserve is ready to go, and construction's gonna start probably another month and a half. You've got the street scape that's gonna be occurring on Monroe Street, we're talking about taking the Schaefer building down finally, and the Madison Street project, these are all things that we started talking about five years ago. So, I think it's great that you're struggling to find the funds to do these projects because it shows we're moving forward, and that took an awful lot of effort by an awful lot of people, and I'm very proud of the city of Decatur for taking the initiative to get this done. The other thing that I will lay out for the council is, you know, we started five years ago, for those, these projects are coming to reality now, where are the projects five years out from here? And that's something that you all need to be thinking about, and our community needs to be thinking about. Where do we go from here? Because once we get these done, that isn't the end. As far as I'm concerned, what I see is, this is the beginning, and it will springboard us into more projects down the line. So, I applaud everybody that's been involved in this because it's taken a lot of effort, and I think once people see these projects completed, they're gonna get excited about what's coming down the pike in the future.
Thanks, Tim. Melissa?
I'm not Melissa.
You're not Melissa?
I just have one thing to request from council. If I could have approval, I would like to reestablish the PCD fund rate. Over time, we go to the max of five cents per $100 of subvaluation, but over time, it lowers due to trending and reassessment and all that. So, if I could publish, we have to have a public hearing, and then we have to get approval from DLGF also to do it, but it would create another $30,000 in revenues if we do that.
Almost $31,000. $3,925.
Oh, yeah, I could have approval to do that if you guys want to reattach it.
We like money. Second. I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you, Phyllis. You have anything else?
So, the public hearing would be...
June 6th.
June 6th. I'll get all about it too.
All right.
That's it.
Anything from the public?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Department heads, I need you to think about, well, they're working on their budgets, I need council to think about raises if you wanna include the raises in the budget, so...
What we have to do is kinda give the department heads a figure to work with, not that we're going to go with it, okay? We could say, hey, add 1% to your salaries, add 2%.
5%.
Wait. Roger, Roger retiring is 5%. We did 2%. No, I meant, did we give three? Did you go 1, 2, 3?
No.
No.
No, we did a 5 percentage.
Yeah. So, that they can work on their budgets, and we don't need to pass this this evening, but just, what do you wanna tell them to use as a figure in their budgets?
Because we'll pass the ordinance, salary ordinance later, but we need to prepare the budgets to cover those raises.
This is nothing that, we don't need to vote on this, it's just, we just need a number for, to throw out to them. Yeah.
And you need it to hide it at the next meeting.
Unless you know tonight, that would be great, but if you don't, we'll just wait a minute.
Yep, next meeting. Any other comments anywhere? If not...
Motion to pay the claims.
A motion, second. And a second, pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you.
And a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Matt to adjourn. Second. And a second from Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. We're adjourned.